What you're doing, Bart.
Oh my God.
That's kind of like with the girls. If they're gonna hit you, turn your shoulder, turn your back. Don't put your hand out. It'll break your head. Ouch.
I was just waiting for it to turn five. Yep, we're good.
I'll shut up now.
Good luck with that.
Call the meeting to order. Start with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Oh, this is Isaac. I'm not sure if you can hear me, but the city room is still muted, so we can't hear, we can't hear the pledge or the other items.
Can you hear us now, Isaac? No, he's not answering.
Clearly not.
Isaac, can you hear us?
Hey Bart, that might be a good thing that the attorney can't hear us.
This'll be a quick meeting.
Yeah. Shouldn't be any expense here.
So close. So that, that means our broadcast is muted.
Isaac, can you hear us?
I can now, yes, thank you.
Oh, perfect.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Here.
Chairman Hewart?
Here.
Commissioner Seig?
Here.
Commissioner Putnam?
Here.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Here.
Thank you.
Next, the consent calendar, and should we do the minutes? Let's do the minutes separate. Any motions on the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve them as submitted.
I'll second it. Move to the seconded. Any discussion? Call for a vote, please.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Seig?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Hewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Approval of resolutions. How about we do three through six as printed on the staff report, which is 21-13 through 21-16? Is there a motion to approve these, one, two, three, four resolutions?
I will so move.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? None? Please call for a vote.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Yes.
Chairman Hewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Seig?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. General business?
All right, so I will start it off.
Start with, yeah, application number one.
I'm gonna abstain. Okay, thank you.
Since Bart lives within 500 feet, he'll be abstaining?
Yes.
And then we can...
Item number one is requesting for a transient rental license and coastal development permit to allow the renting or leasing of a room with or without tableboards in a dwelling unit for periods of fewer than 30 consecutive days duration at 54 Palau. The owner and applicant is TU Financial. The applicant is present via Zoom. This property is located within the low density residential. The property contains one bedroom and one bathroom and is developed with a residential use consistent with the general plan and is allowed under the 2021 growth policy. The transient rental housing impact statement submitted by the applicant indicates that the property was used as a vacation home by the owner. The property manager for the unit is Veronica Bravo. Her contact information is included in the staff report. The subject property and all surrounding properties are developed with single-family attached condominium units as part of the Hamilton Cove development. The requested transient rental license does not involve any physical changes to the existing residence that would adversely affect or materially detrimental to adjacent uses, buildings, and/or structures. The saturation analysis is waived for transient rental units within Hamilton Cove condominiums, which is the location of the proposed use. The proposed project is categorically exempt under Section 15305 of the State Sequa Guidelines, minor alterations in land use limitations, which do not result in change in land use or density. The project requires a coastal development permit under Section 9/8.102B2V of the Avalon Municipal Code. This project is within the 300-foot appealable zone. Staff has not received any comments in favor or in opposition of the transient rental license. Staff is recommending the planning commission find the project categorically exempt under Section 15305 of the State Sequa Guidelines, minor alterations in land use limitation, adopt the findings necessary as outlined in the staff report to support approval of the coastal development permit, including that the project is within the 300-foot appealable zone, accept the findings necessary to approve the transient rental license, and find the application is allowed under the 2021 annual growth policy. This concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions.
Any questions for staff before we open the public hearing? See none? Open the hearing. Anybody wish to testify for or against? Any last-minute comments?
I have no comments.
Okay. Close the public hearing?
Oh, I do have a...
Yoli.
I had a question for staff. It's a license now, right?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay.
And we may have the owner on Zoom as well.
Anybody who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the license here of this unit, recognizing that it is categorically exempt from SEQUA, and dump the finding of the coastal development permit and accept the necessary approval of the transient license, and find the application meets our 2021 growth policy.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
A second, and a second? Any discussion on the motion? See none? Can we vote?
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Hewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Seig?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you.
Application for...
Thank you.
Item number two, please.
Okay, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Item number two is an application for a site plan. I just wanted to note that this project is also combined with another project, which is listed as a separate item, item number three, on here. The developer is currently engaged in securing a tax credit, re-syndication and bond reallocation project to do some renovations for two project sites. They are affordable housing projects within the city of Avalon, but we're gonna hear each month separate as it pertains to the site plan, so just wanted to put that note. So, as I mentioned, this application is for a site plan for the exterior and interior renovation of an existing affordable housing building. This one is for the Beacon Hill Apartments, which are located at 309 Beacon Street in Avalon, California. This is for a 14-unit complex. The project is not subject to a coastal development permit as it is not within the 300-foot appealable zone, and the project is categorically exempt under Section 15301CDE2A and B of the State Sequa Guidelines. The applicant is Relativity Architects, as well as Catalina TSA, which is Thomas Safran and Associates Housing LP. The city is actually the ground leaseholder of this complex and would be the de facto owner on that. The unit is listed in the special commercial zone, and as mentioned before, the project is not subject to a coastal development permit as the scope of the project for the proposed renovations do not change the overall square footage. It does not otherwise risk an adverse environmental impact or public access, and does not constitute a change in the intensity of use. Essentially, what this property is, is a renovation project, and the proposed scope of the work for this project consists of exterior renovations, which include things like repairing and improving the path of travel with new pedestrian concrete paving, so that it brings up everything in the existing parking lot to ADA standards, repairing concrete and trip hazards. This would also include new curb cuts, ramps, and handrails, adjustments to the existing slope. It'll be adding and replacing the existing lighting with some new LED lights, as well as lighting scones on the exterior of the wall, and then they'll be doing some landscape and minor landscaping and irrigation. The interior renovations are primarily consisting of ADA accessibility and adaptability upgrades to a couple different sections. The first one is to the community room, the kitchen, the restroom, and the laundry room, as well as the residential units. This would also include renovations to the kitchen and the bathrooms. Some of the upgrades on the ground level, at least one unit will be upgraded for audiovisual upgrades, and then eight units on the second floor will have just kind of some standard upgrades. The buildings will receive new windows and doors, heating systems, and water heaters. These renovations are primarily cosmetic in nature and include interior paint, installation of new furnishings, fixtures, equipment, bathroom updates, kitchen updates, and other assorted hardware. The project conforms to all zoning codes and ordinances set forth. The project does not create any additional living or transient units and is allowable under the city's growth policy. It also does not need any water allocation, and the water allocation is not applicable in this because they're not adding any bedrooms or expanding the footprint of any of that. So as proposed, the project is an allowable use in the special commercial zone with the conditional use permit and complies with all applicable development standards, and as such, staff is recommending that the planning commission make three different findings today for this. The first one is to find the project categorically exempt under SEQUA Section 15301CD and E2AB for existing facilities, approve the site plan as proposed with the standard listed conditions, and find the project does not require a coastal development permit pursuant to the municipal code Section 9-8.102B2. So with that, that concludes my report, and I also have representatives on Zoom who are available to answer any questions as well.
Okay. Any questions for staff before we open the public hearing?
How old's the building? How long have we got it?
I'm sorry?
How old is the structure?
I believe the structure was built in about 1999.
About 22 years old. Seems like it was a lot sooner than that.
Yeah.
Or recent. Why don't we get down?
Any other questions?
My question for staff would be, I know it's a, that street is very congested, so how would they be staging our, like, vehicles to bring in materials and stuff?
Sunny Lane?
Would it be on Sunny Lane or Main Beacon? Because I know that that is just like for safety reasons is a...
You're talking more for, like, staging, construction staging and demolition?
Just like bringing in, yeah, demolition and bringing in materials and, you know, big vehicles, because that is kind of a very busy street that everybody uses and vehicles up and down, you know, all the time, so I just...
We haven't moved through that process yet. They'll definitely need an obstruction permit, and with an obstruction permit, it'll also require both the fire chief and the public works department, the public works director to take a look at that area to make sure that, one, they don't impede traffic and they take traffic considerations into consideration, but also to kind of outline and go over their demo plan to make sure that they don't block access into that.
Right, just for safety reasons, I think that that's important.
Absolutely, and that's part of the normal process.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Okay, I'm gonna open the hearing. Public hearing's open. Anybody wishing to testify?
I do not have any public comment.
Okay, well...
Okay, I'm gonna close, close the public hearing.
Okay, I want to know what happens with the tenants when they're moving all these things around. I mean, there's a lot of stuff. You're replacing, it seems, every fixture and every fitting, but you're also, for the adaptable ADA units, you're moving fixtures which I, I don't know, I think it could have been done without moving everything, but you start moving all the things around, you're tearing into everything. What happens to the tenants?
And before I try and venture a guess, I do have members of the project team that are on there that might be better equipped to answer that and what their game plan is.
Hi, this is Steve Frans, and I can speak to that. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, so the tenants will be, go through a relocation process with the management team. They will be interviewing them, checking in with them on their specific needs. They will be temporarily moved to either a hotel. Some like to go to friends and family. We're looking at the Holiday Inn on the island there. There were other options as well, so they will be taken care, they will receive per diem and for food and things like that. They will be completely taken care of while they are out, and they get to come back to a newly enhanced renovated unit.
Okay, so...
Does that help?
Yeah, because you're gonna have to move people. I mean, you know, you're moving fixtures which, hey, obviously, these are well-developed plans that cost money to get this far, but, you know, you're moving toilets, you're moving, you know, you're moving more than a little bit. You know, the lighting issues are less, but you gotta tear into everything to do all of this. But when you start moving, you know, major things, you're tearing into the floors, the ceilings, this, that, and the other, and I don't know. I think there's a way to have adapted to ADA or adaptable without literally moving something, you know, a few feet over.
And they do have... Sorry, Steve, they do have requirements on tenant rights and tenant, what they, what they're able to do with the tenants, because this is a federally funded program, and it also involves affordable housing, so they've got certain rules and regulations that they must abide by. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I was just gonna speak to that. You know, ideally, we want to disrupt the tenant as much as possible. In those ADA units, there's two at each property, or two at this property, I should speak to. They're, the big issue and the reason those toilets and those things are moving is because of the clearances that are required for the one for the funding of the project and general ADA, so we have to move those things to meet those very specific requirements. For instance, the toilet must be between, the center line of a toilet must be between 17 and 18 inches off the wall. The grab bars must, you know, be specifically at their required heights and distances off the wall, and so that's where those changes come from, is those requirements that honestly, we don't have an option to meet. They're there so that the next tenant or the current tenant, who may have a mobility issue, will have the proper clearances and can live comfortably. So, a little disruptive now, we'll take very good care of them while they're out, and then they'll come back to, again, to a unit that is ready for them and allows them to live comfortably ongoing, so, but that is the reason. Those, those clearances are the issue on that.
I understand clearance issues, but some of these things, and the plans I'm looking at, I can't read a lot of the print, but I, just playing around with it a little bit, looks like there could have been other solutions that would still would, would not require you to be moving everything, every place, and it seems to be a lot of extraneous moving stuff, and I guess...
You and I should work together on this, because I'm with you. I push our architect team to move as little as possible, one for time, two for cost. There's no excitement in moving things we don't have to, and we really did go back and forth on this. Some of the updated requirements, for instance, is next to every range, you have to have a clear 30-inch working space where a person can roll under the cabinet and have that space. Next to the sinks, you have to have roll under space there, so those, those extra spaces are what kind of turns things upside down.
I'm aware of that.
And so, I'm with you on that. We really went back and forth to move as little as possible, but to get to the requirement that was there.
You're basically tearing everything up. I mean, when you're dealing with, you know, water lines, waistlines, and...
Yes.
All of that, and the electrical's easier, but you're tearing, you gotta, you're relocating almost everything, so, and...
Yep, you're right.
Then you're replacing all of the windows, and it's not quite taking it down to the studs and starting over, but there's an awful lot of, there's, you know, that's really major, you know, it's gonna be uninhabitable for a while.
Any other, any other questions for the applicant?
I agree, I mean, it is, it's kind of like a jigsaw puzzle for us to make these things work. As Steve said, the requirements are really specific, and you don't really get freedom to fall short of those, and that's what, that's what we did here, and we went through a whole bunch of different options with Steve, a lot of iterations, and these were the least impactful solutions that we could come up with, and, yeah, it's unfortunate that people have to leave their units for a while, but they are really well taken care of by Steve and his team, and as he said, when they come back, there's a really safe and usable unit for them. So it really is, we've done about 6,000 units in the last four years, and this is part of the difficulty of doing these things, is really satisfying all the rules, and there's a lot of them, and there are important rules to satisfy, and so we worked really hard to make it the least amount of work we can do, and in this case, I believe we did that. It seems like a lot, but it is, but it is a lot to satisfy.
Any additional comments?
What's the timeframe to do the construction portion of this? Do we know?
Yeah, like, do this.
The overall timeframe is starting in about June and going through December of next year. We'll be doing one unit at a time through these, so, and then there's community areas, roofs, windows, painting, all of that as well, landscaping.
How can you do one unit at a time when you're rerouting a lot of piping and stuff? It's hard to do at the same time.
Yeah, there's, it's a good question. They, we have it set up so that it can be contained. They're all on the first floor, and the rerouting of the piping stays within the existing unit's walls and then the existing unit's floor, so there's no one below them. They're just moving over a bit.
Thank you. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to a...
One more question. So we're gonna do this through the summer, so you're moving people out, no problem putting them in a hotel between June and, say, October, right? No problem with that?
But I think he explained the strategy pretty clear, and it sounds like it's really cut through.
Yeah, he said they're gonna start in June and end next December.
Yeah, but they're also...
Would you like to make a motion?
But they're also gonna go one unit or so at a time, so, I don't know that the impact is gonna be that substantial.
We've been in contact with hotels and other groups to secure housing so that we are certain that we're okay.
Okay, I've got one more question then. When you're getting rid of everything, every fitting, every fixture, every window, is there any thought to offering some of this stuff that isn't broken or totally finished? They offer it to people here who might be able to use some of these things to upgrade their own properties?
So, you know, we could look at windows and things like that. I think that, you know, appliances and stuff, we've gone through, they've done unit inspections, and so there are some units that have upgraded refrigerators and things like that, so those will not be replaced. They'll be kept. We definitely don't want to get rid of those, but it could be that if there's something that is worthwhile keeping, that might be maybe not as great as we want it to be, it might be better than what somebody else has, so we can certainly talk through that if there's a specific person to figure out if that can work.
And the cost of getting rid of it. You could, you might be able to save a little money by not, you know, getting rid of everything, which is expensive here.
Yes, it is, yes.
Okay, do I have a motion for this project?
Yes, I'll make a motion and include staff's list of three recommendations.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
So it's moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? See none? Please tally the vote, please.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Yes.
Chairman Hewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Seig?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carried.
Thank you to all of you, and I appreciate those questions.
So, item number three is continuation of essentially item number two. This is an application for a site plan for the exterior and interior renovation of an existing affordable building. This building has 24 units at Bird Park Apartments. This is located at 234 Bird Park Road in Avalon. The project, again, is not subject to a coastal development permit and is not within the 300-foot appealable zone. The project is categorically exempt under Section 15301CD and E2A and B. The owner of this project is the Santa Catalina Island Company. They are the ground leaseholder of the land. The applicant, again, is Relativity Architects and Catalina TSA Housing LP. The zone is in the resort recreation zone, and the property is, as I mentioned, is currently, currently exists as a 24-unit affordable housing building. The proposed scope of work for this publicly funded project consists of exterior and interior renovations. These exterior renovations include repairing and improving the path of travel with new pedestrian concrete paving to meet ADA requirements, repairing concrete and trip hazards, repairing and resurfacing, and reconfiguring the existing ADA parking with a new seal coat and striping, installing and replacing new LED light poles and building sconces, along with minor exterior repairs such as paint. They will also be doing some minor landscape and irrigation upgrades. Interior renovations will consist primarily of ADA accessibility and adaptability upgrades to the community room, kitchen, restroom, laundry room, and residential units. There are two units on the ground level that will have accessibility upgrades. One ground level will have audiovisual upgrades, and 11 units on the second floor will have some standard upgrades. The project conforms to all zoning codes and ordinances set forth. The project conforms to all zoning codes and ordinances set forth below in the staff report, and the project does not create any additional living or transient rental units, and the requirement under the city's growth policy is codified in the municipal code is met as well. This project also does not require nor need a water allocation, is, it's not adding any new bedrooms. And with that, staff is recommending that the planning commission make three findings. The first one is that they find the project categorically exempt under SEQA section fifteen, three oh one, C, D, and E, two A, B, for existing facilities, approve the site plan as proposed with the standard listed conditions, and find that the project does not require a coastal development permit pursuant to the municipal code section nine dash eight, one oh two, B two. So with that, do you have any questions?
Any questions for, for staff before we open the hearing?
I have one question. Did staff look at existing parking in this complex?
I had the building official, John, look at it.
Okay, 'cause the, what I've seen to be relevant as of, as of late is that a lot of the on-property parking spaces now have started to spill over and, and kind of encroach into the streets, so there's many street-side parking spaces that are taken up by residents of this complex. So I'm curious whether there's the ability of staff and/or the developer to look at maybe expanding some of the parking footprint on their property so that we can pull some of those vehicles back on the property.
We can certainly take a look at that. No formal site plan, or plan check has been conducted as of yet. We were doing the site plan first, but I can make a note of that to make parking, onsite parking a priority.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? None? Open the public hearing?
If you have questions, well, let's do it, yeah.
I repeat the same questions that I asked about the last project.
Okay, I guess the prompt is for the applicants to address kind of the same issues for the previous approved project for this one.
Steve or Scott, can you address-
Yeah.
-the construction approach on this one?
Yeah, sure. I can speak to that as well. So, the approach will be for those two ADA units on the first floor, the same, the same thing that we looked at it every way possible to try and minimize the unit impact. The, the approach will be that the tenants will be moving out and either going into accommodations that we're providing for them, or some have family or friends off the island, some on the island, and they will be going to those locations. It's up to them. Either way, we provide the accommodation costs, and then we provide food and, you know, premiums for food and things like that as well. The, I'm trying to think what other, what other specific questions there were. The ADA, I think, seemed to be the most important one, and that is that, the same thing with these layouts. We did everything we could to dial it in, to make the most sense, reduce impact, and speed up the rehab on those units. So, right now, we're anticipating the rehabs for these units to take between two and three weeks. For the ADA units. For the standard units, it'll be closer to like eight days.
How long you think this overall project will take, like, start to finish?
So, same thing, we're starting in June, and then they will run, the full project will run all the way through December of next year. The final things that will be done is landscape, you know, repair and things for anything that was damaged. There's, there's more ADA walkway work and access path of travel work at this property. It's a hill, but it's, it's very, the pathways are basically where they are now, they just needed to adjust some slopes and getting things to where the ramps are the right length and have the right landing, you know, areas, things like that. So, we're moving a playground and putting a new playground for the, for the residents. We are also upgrading the parking that's there to be ADA compliant, the slopes on that. So, same timeline, if we can push it faster, we will. Everyone that we're talking with is on board, and we're working at a schedule, we'll be efficient between the two different projects. So, painting, for instance, will run from one project right into the next, roofing from one project right into the next, windows, that type of thing. So, they're over, work is done, and then they move on, so.
When you said December, I thought you had said of the following year, or you're talking December of two thousand twenty-one?
The following year.
The following year, two thousand twenty-two.
Both of them.
Anything else?
Hey, Steve, have you made arrangements for ADA compliant appliances and that kind of thing ahead of time?
I mean, we have the ADA compliances that we typically use and subs and vendors that we work with to get them, so yes. Are you talking about the timeline to get those right now?
Well, yes, so, what I'm sharing is that I know a couple of builders that are quite backlog on appliance-related stuff as a result of COVID, so just to give you a heads-up.
Yes. You're right, they're having a backlog on compressors specifically, which have to go into refrigerators, so yeah, thank you for that.
Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Last chance for calls. Close the public hearing.
Is there a motion? I'll make a motion to approve what the recommendations.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Commissioner Kennedy?
Build it.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Yes.
Chairman Hewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Seig?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion approved.
Thank you again. We look forward to two great projects in the city.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
So, item number four is a public hearing to consider minor renovations to, and bear with me, Article Six of Chapter Three of Title Nine. This is for planning and zoning of the Avalon Municipal Code to amend the definition of minor renovation projects to reduce the threshold to allow certain minor projects be administratively processed and adopt a resolution to recommend adoption of those changes. As all of you may be aware, at the regular city council meeting on November fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, city council established a policy to allow some minor renovations be approved administratively by staff. Following a public meeting discussion on how the AMC defines and applies that minor renovation project at the regular planning commission meeting back in March, March seventeenth of two thousand twenty-one, the planning commission directed staff to bring back an amendment to this municipal code to reduce that threshold to allow certain minor projects be administratively processed. Specifically, the planning commission desired to remove four requirements from the code. This included the requirement to eliminate the threshold for projects that do not remodel, renovate, or reconstruct more than twenty-five percent of the floor area of any commercial or multi-unit residential structure. E, which was the requirement that a project does not remodel, renovate, or reconstruct more than fifty percent of the floor area of any single-family residential structure. H, for the requirement that the project does not alter more than twenty percent of any side or roof of any structure. And then J, which is that no minor renovation project has been approved or conditionally approved for the site that is the subject of the application within the twelve months immediately preceding the application. The proposed change is not applicable to SEQA, and staff, as such, recommends that the planning commission adopt the resolution recommending that the city council amend Article Six of Chapter Three of Title Nine for planning and zoning of the Avalon Municipal Code pertaining to the definition of minor renovation and administrative approval, and find the action exempt from SEQA. And I also have Isaac here, should the planning commission have any additional questions.
Any questions before we open the public hearing? Actually, I have one. I'm assuming that if we have a public hearing, we get comments or don't, that we can modify this and move forward, and either adopt it or not adopt it. That we, this isn't, or I guess my question is, if we modify this proposal, do we need an additional public hearing?
I believe, and Isaac can verify, but I believe you can pass a amended recommendation because we're not actually adopting it, this is adopting the resolution, and then we can reflect that in the, in the draft ordinance to city council.
Mike is correct, absolutely correct. So, the commission can feel free, as part of their recommendation, to modify the draft ordinance. And if the commission chooses to recommend the ordinance to council, they can do so with modifications as part of this public hearing.
Thank you. Any other questions before we open the hearing? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody wishing, there's no one in the audience, is anyone online?
I do not have any comments for this.
Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And any discussion before we make a motion? I have two things that I noticed. Yeah, I'd rather explain before a motion's made. One is in, this is, I don't know, just when I read through it real quickly, and K, where it says "and," I think I must have misread that, but to me, because it says "and" not "or," that you would have to meet all these requirements before it kicked in, is that right?
That's correct, and that's one of the reasons why, when we were discussing the threshold, why projects for site plans that didn't seem to be within the purview of the planning commission are, are now before the, the planning commission.
Yeah, so does that mean you would have to tick every single one of these before it would come to the planning commission?
That's correct.
So if you missed one, then it would be administrative?
That's correct, and where most of the projects were starting to get hung up on was the requirements for D and E. Both of those speak to the remodel, renovation, or reconstruction of either twenty-five percent of the floor area of a commercial or multi-unit residential structure, or that threshold is up to fifty percent for a single-family residential structure. So all of those requirements had to have been met in order for staff to be able to approve that administratively. By reducing the, by eliminating those thresholds, now what you're saying is in order for, as proposed, in order for staff to be able to approve these administratively, that they would need to meet the requirements under A, B, C, F, G, I, K, and L.
Okay, so if none of those happened, then it would be a-
That's correct.
And then I guess the other one, I was thinking that, I don't know why I missed it before, but the fence one doesn't seem like a big number.
F.
You know, I'll tell, I'll give you an example of that. How about if you put a six-foot fence on top of a six-foot wall?
But administratively, that could be denied. That's what I'm wondering, is, this isn't, I mean-
Okay, but I'm just saying, this has happened across the street from me. It's like, well, no, the fence isn't higher than six feet. Yeah, but it's on top of the-
Right, but I think that's above ground level. What I'm wondering, though, is not whether or not it merits, I mean, I'm not talking about the merits of six feet, I'm just talking about if somebody has a project, do we wanna hear it because it's a seven-foot fence?
Then you gotta know if people get deer in their backyard.
Yeah, if it's an eight-foot fence for that, but, yeah. And I know, I know where the four and the six-foot fence came, became popular back in the seventies when there was the continuous lawn, which doesn't apply here. I mean, the merits of it are a little odd, but this isn't about the merits of that particular item, it's whether or not we wanna see it, or is that something staff can do? And obviously, I'm thinking, I don't particularly wanna see an application if it's, let's say if E's did everything and they had a six-and-a-half-foot fence, that shouldn't, I'm thinking that, or an eight-foot fence or a twelve-foot fence, that shouldn't kick it to the planning commission, that would still be, still be, you know, administratively managed.
So that was the only other one I saw.
But that gives at least the neighbors a chance to call, call in on it and everything that's taken into consideration, that's just not under-
Yeah, I mean, that's the-
I mean, and I gotta say, if I was your neighbor, you know, six-foot fence on five wood, then you start putting up eight, nine-foot fence?
Is there a code saying that you can't have over six-foot fence?
That I would have to look into, I'm not familiar with that section.
I don't think so.
Wouldn't get it passed anyway.
Yeah, so we'll go ahead and keep it in then. I'm just-
There is a height, I think, on fences.
I'm sure there is, I just don't know what the code actually states.
Yeah.
Okay. And C, the project does involve the expansion, should that be, does not involve the expansion of exterior walls?
Correct.
So we just needed to add a word there. Did you copy that?
No, I did not, I'm sorry.
Item C, the project does not involve the expansion of the exterior structure.
Yeah, my apologies. That was user error.
Good catch.
It's in the ordinance, it's on the ordinance without the word.
On the ordinance as well?
Yeah.
I'll make note and add the "not."
Actually, I, I guess my next question is, would the two, I almost hate to ask this, the two projects we just saw, would they have been before us? Based on these new standards? My guess is they wouldn't have.
Correct.
No.
That that could have been done administratively.
Correct.
That would be correct. One of them, the, the main point on that is the project only requires approval of a site plan, it does not have a variance conditionally used permit, coastal development permit, zoning, or general plan amendment, or any other permit or entitlement. Otherwise, they check all the other boxes.
Right.
So, you'd be correct. Same with the previous agenda items for the renovations of the hotel and the scuba shop.
Okay, and I would say, based on our decision and staff recommendation, that makes sense that we're going in this direction. Yeah. Any other discussion items before someone makes a motion?
And I think that, that, I mean, looking at this and changing this, it actually makes projects move forward faster as well, because we're once a month and, you know, having to wait, I mean, time is everything.
Anybody wanna make a motion? I'll make a motion with the, with the adjustments, with the one word in there.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Yes.
Chairman Hewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Seig?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carried.
So, under items of discussion, anything, anything you mind? Any general?
I have no updates at this time. Isaac, did you have anything that you'd like to add?
I did not, just that we'll work, Mike and I and Mercio will work on noticing the planning commission's recommendation on that ordinance and get it set to be heard as a public hearing item before the commission, before the council. That's it.
Any commissioners?
I have one question for staff. I apologize for doing it here at a meeting and, rather than catching you up time, but I've been busy, you guys have been busy. There is currently a deck replacement on Whitley Avenue, just after the bend in the road, and the residence has been there a very, very long time, so I'm certain that, you know, that the deck needs to be replaced. But it appears to me that the deck encroaches on the public easement. The deck actually extends out over the side- The deck actually extends out over the sidewalk. So when a project like that comes before the city, do we update an encroachment permit or anything like that so that the city's indemnified from liability as a result of a deck being over a public right-of-way?
It absolutely should. My understanding is encroachment permits are actually approved at the city council level. We're actually in the process of addressing another deck encroachment issue, working with the property owner at a different location. So if there is an encroachment, one, if I could talk to you after here to get the address, we'll send our building official up there, one, to do an investigation, and two, to make sure that they either have an existing encroachment. And if they don't, they will be noticed to either remove or to go before the city council to get that encroachment permit approved.
I have another question on that. It's an older building, so it, something like that, would that require it to be engineered?
And you mean for encroachments?
No, just the deck.
Oh, just the deck? Yeah, potentially the-
Because when I drove by once, it looked a little scary when everything was out, you know?
Decks, my, my understanding is decks come to the planning commission, but encroachments go to the city council.
Okay, do you know if there's a-
And all, this is Isaac, just a reminder, you know, without something being agendized in terms of what might come before the council or commission, we want to ensure we don't have like a substantive discussion on it amongst the, amongst the commission.
Okay, can you just follow up on that for safety reasons?
Interestingly enough, I'd love for you to follow up on encroachments. Nobody ever pays for them, right? I mean, there's a lot of, the first meeting I had in 2016, Jack Tousie, who failed to show at the May council meeting, and he was supposed to come back in June, and, and they just put it on the consent calendar and approved it. The city gave him 100 square feet, period, with not even an encroachment fee, which is a huge $218. And they just gave him the property. And if that goes on and other things, I mean, and it was said to me at that time, well, you know, there's a lot of encroachments. People put banners up for an upcoming event. Yeah, but there's encroachments and encroachments, and if the city's broke, it might, it might pay just a little money for the city.
Yeah, I can't speak to all encroachments, and I'd be more than happy to have a-
I understand that. I'm just saying it's a, it's a thing because to me, and that was my first meeting, and I remember it because of that. Because at that point in time, it was stated that every square foot of that encroachment was worth $1,400. $1,400 times 97 square feet, you know, maybe the city could use money like that now or at least pick up the $200 fee, something, depending what the encroachment's for.
I understand. Thank you.
Any other business needing adjourned?